Welcome to Thinking Green. I'm Rhana, and as you all must know by now, November 2 is Election Day. So our shows will predominantly be talking to candidates in New London and maybe some surrounding towns as well between now and then. So tonight's, well, actually, we're pre-taping this show. There won't be any call-ins, but it will air on November 12, October 12. Oh, my gosh. So my guest today is Keith Kimball, and Keith is the Green Party candidate this year for Board of Education. So, you know, welcome to Thinking Green. And I guess I'll start by asking you a little bit about like how you came to decide to run and, you know, what your background and qualifications as well as motivations are.
Well, I think I've been voting for the Green Party for about 16 years now. I placed a priority on third parties for most of my voting life, but I set out on the Greens, you know, about four elections ago, and the Green Party needed a Board of Ed candidate. And, you know, I want to keep, I want to keep, you know, the Greens relevant in New London. We've had, we've had Green candidates serve in New London in the past. I think it's been a good thing, you know? So I wanted to make sure that there was somebody who was filling that slot on the voter card. But it was definitely a bicycle built for two because it was a good time for me in my life. I'm semi-retired now. But both of my parents were professional teachers. My dad was a flight instructor and a professional pilot, and he taught aviation at the college level. My mother was a public school teacher, special ed for 30 years in New Jersey and Pennsylvania and Massachusetts. And I came to New London 30 years ago, graduated from New London High School, and I just, I have that interest in, in New London and education, public education especially. My daughter's a Jennings third grader. As far as qualifications, aside from a deep interest in it, my, my career has been in creating financials and analyzing accounts for corporations as a staff accountant. So I know my way around a budget. I know, I also know some things that are used, techniques that are used to, you know, mess around with budgets, you know? So I feel like I'd be a hard sell, you know, for, for any kind of budget games, and I think I can get some input in there. And I've seen, I've spent a lot of time just volunteering in education-related things. I worked with you as treasurer for Public Ed. I was on Friendship Schools FFO as their treasurer for two years. So, yeah.
And I think it's a particularly interesting fit from my point of view because the Green Party probably over the last like two or three years has really come to the realization about what the importance of budgets can be, that, you know, you can have all the great ideas in the world, but if you don't fund them, they don't really mean anything. They won't come to fruition. So, you know, what we put in the budget, that really is how we express what's important to us.
Oh, absolutely. And, you know, businesses talk about it all the time, too. You know, they talk about, you know, what we're budgeting is, is a reflection of what's important to this business, what they want to achieve. You know, oftentimes, it's, it's used when they're just about to tell you how much they, they pay for your benefits and stuff like that. But...
Which is also true in New London public schools, I'm sure.
Which is also true in New London public schools, you know? But yeah, the, the budget's really important. That's where the rubber meets the road, you know? It's the same thing with, you know, public policies. You know, we can write up policies and laws all the time, but if there's no, you know, if there's no enforcement behind it, if there's no priority towards those policies, then they're just words on paper.
Yeah, and as you were speaking, I was thinking that it's become increasingly popular, and I'm not against this and have at times promoted it, for our city council, for example, to pass resolutions stating how important something is. You know, racism is a public health crisis and, and we need, you know, universal healthcare. And it's great to make those statements, but at a certain point, you have to put some money to support it, or it's just words.
There has to be money, there has to be action, you know? Otherwise, it's just, it is, it's just words. And, and what have we seen since then? We had, last year, we had quite a lot of young voices, and we had a lot of demonstrators asking for the, you know, police budget to be reduced. Now, you know, and this is poignant to me because I just spent last night at the public hearing for the A R A P?
American...
No, American, yeah.
ARPA.
ARPA, yeah.
I don't know what the P stands, American Republic Recovery Plan.
Plan Act, yeah. But anyway, we, New London got 26 million to, over two years to spend in four years to, to, you know, burden in four years and then completely spend in six years. So what has happened since then? So, you know, we put a referendum that should have happened in November when we're, we're voting for everything else, but we spent more money to put that referendum in August. And I think that was like a key reason of why it failed. There was obviously a lot of groundswell support from the population. We had demonstration, hundreds of people marching through New London asking for this. And, you know, so they pass the resolution, and they say, okay, we'll put this up to vote, but I don't really see, you know, their heart behind it.
This is the AD officer mandate.
Yeah. Okay, so what happened with ARPA? Well, it's supposed to be for recovery for COVID, you know, related issues, and we're buying new police uniforms and police surveillance cameras. You know, that, that, that doesn't really show like there's anything, you know, being given out towards the people who wanted, you know, less police protection. Meanwhile, Leglate got their budget increased by 1%. Leglate Health District, right? It's a COVID-related thing. And I know I'm getting off the, the subject of public schools, but we, we asked for a police cut, and they effectively gave them a raise, right? They expanded their budget with ARPA funds.
And actually, there is a real Board of Ed connection with the funds because as we return to, you know, in-person learning for the students, the, it's still true that the amount of cleaning that's needed, the amount of, you know, facility care and, we're still dealing with COVID. It's not gone.
Right, it's not gone, and we see nothing in there for, you know, for, first of all, there's very little for homeless populations, and we've had an increase in homelessness, obviously, because of COVID. There was nothing in there, you know, for eviction protection. There was literally nothing in there for testing for COVID, all right? Now, I know we're getting a lot of, I know we're getting a lot of support from the state and the federal government to make sure that, that testing and vaccinations are ubiquitous, but we're asking people to go back to school, you know? What about, you know, you know, what about making sure that there's testing for everybody on a bi-weekly basis, including the children? That's something that the city, you know, could have, could have put forward. We gave NASS 1.9 million to have a mobile classroom. I mean, that's what's budgeted. Hopefully, I'm hoping that it doesn't turn into that because that's 7% of what we're getting, 26 million. We give 1.9 million to a nonprofit that's not based in New London to have a mobile classroom in New London about the ocean. Now, I'm pretty sure that the district can handle a mobile classroom with 1.9 million. Why would you give almost $2 million in a district that's struggling for funds to an outside agency for public education? Where's the priority, right?
Yeah, and, and, you know, bringing it back to the, you know, as a response to, you know, the burden that COVID has, has wrought, you know, Connecticut College tests its staff once a week and its students twice a week.
Right.
And that, and I think, you know, at the beginning of their school year, they did have a lot of positive tests among the students.
Yeah, I read that there was.
But they had such robust testing, I think they could bring things under control, contact trace pretty well.
Well, it slows down the spread, right? I mean, we know it's going to happen, even when people were vaccinated, but it slows the spread by giving us more information. And I'm just surprised that police and fire department uniforms were prioritized over more robust, ubiquitous testing, you know, to our most vulnerable populations. You know, nothing in there for drug addiction either, which is also exacerbated by pandemic.
Sure.
You know, not just with the stress that, that, you know, causes people to get sicker, but, you know, sometimes people, they get sick, they can't get maintenance, all kinds of things. I know social workers who complain about it all the time, how that's one of the populations that's fallen through the cracks. It's certainly important in a school district and a city where we've seen, you know, a serious problem with fentanyl overdoses, but nothing in there.
So, so now, do you know of any further public hearings on these ARPA funds? I know there was one yes, last night.
There was one last night, and then they had the council meeting afterwards. But from what I understand, we have, I think, the next year to actually budget this. We have two years to, to budget, four years to burden, and six years to deplete. So, you know, there, there's things on there. And there were a lot of complaints, and they were pretty consistent. And, you know, I, I know that some, I know that some council members were listening, and some probably weren't. But it was, it was even from Democrats, Greens, and Republicans, the message was fairly consistent. I heard a Republican talking about, why aren't we giving to parks and wrecks? You know, why, why is Leglate not getting so much? You know, why isn't there anything for homeless? And so it was pretty nonpartisan.
Well, I guess, I, I think the struggling people in New London are pretty visible.
Yeah.
And so, you know, it's really kind of impossible to, to ignore the fact that, I mean, you go to Bank Street and State Street, a lot of empty storefronts, you know, some kind of small business assistance might really be helpful. So, but sometimes I do think in the city, we get grandiose plans and then forget to just fix the sidewalk cracks.
Right, right, which was also mentioned last night. I think, I think it's pretty consistent at every public hearing and, and city council meeting that someone's going to mention the sidewalks, and they should.
Yeah.
Because that's what we should be doing, that's what the town council should be doing, the Board of Ed should be doing. We should be focusing on the fundamentals, you know, and the quality, you know, and making sure that we, you know, we have the resources. The city needs to be a good place to live. That's where you get businesses.
Now, now, getting back a little bit more directly to Board of Ed.
Right.
So you have a child at Jennings School, you're a big advocate for public education, and yet I, I, you know, you appreciate the teachers and the crossing guards, you know, and the people who spend time with, with your daughter, but I know you have experienced some frustrations with the system. So, talk about that a little and why you, you know, you feel like it isn't just you that, you know, the parents need that kind of extra voice.
I don't, I don't think it's just me. And, and I've had, I've had difficulties, you know, me and my wife had difficulties. Pixel's been in Learn since, you know, preschool, so, but she's been in the, in the district since first grade. We moved her from Friendship School to Jennings. And, yeah, I think that there's a, there's a problem with the district's, you know, culture of communication and, and how they respond to issues, especially when, when they're communicating with families. They seem to be very reactive. You know, there's a lot, you know, there's, there's a lot of very polite, very neutral communication and language, but there's not much action or response, and it's not very proactive, you know? Those are all very vague. But I talked to a lot of parents in New London, and a lot of them have, you know, similar problems. Now, my, my problem this year, you know, and I understand, I have friends in New London who work for the district, you know? I, I talk to, you know, everybody, parents, I talk to school workers, I have my own experience with my mom and my family, you know, so I get it. I know it's a big complicated mess, but, you know, this year, we're having a big problem with, with traffic around all the schools, and, and everybody's doing it as much as they can. But at Jennings, a morning drop-off on William Street, we're having at times three or four cars double parking in a wall on William Street, and they're parking in the exit, the school exit across the crosswalk, they're blocking the access rent, incredibly dangerous. It's very hard to see traffic and pedestrians around that many cars. You know, obviously, you want the ramp and the crosswalk not to be blocked, you don't want people walking out into the street to get around the car. It's very dangerous, and it's not permitted. You know, so this has been going on all month, and it's actually getting a little better, but not for any action on, on the district at all. I, first I contacted through the web, the city's webpage, I contacted traffic enforcement three days in a row, put pictures up of the situation, told them where and when it was happening, and they eventually closed that ticket and said, we don't monitor this full-time, called dispatch. They didn't tell me which dispatch or what phone number. So, you know, I escalated that, I emailed that to Mayor Pacero. And the next day, there was an NLPD officer, you know, just politely telling people that they couldn't park there. And, and that worked for two days, and then, you know, we got a rainstorm and they're back again. Now, prior to that whole thing, the principal approached me while I was dropping off Pixel, and she says, how you doing? I said, I'm great, but you see this? And I pointed it out to her, and she saw it, and she, her reaction, I remember exactly, was, oh, they shouldn't do that. And I said, no. And she said, well, let me send out a notice. And I'm like, that'd be great. And I, you know, I thought either a notice would go out to alert the, the parents not to do that, or a notice would go out to the faculty to be on the lookout for that, and we'd have some faculty up there, you know, checking out. Nothing happened for a week, until I was down there picking Pixel up, and I was talking to the parents about another rainstorm, another horrible traffic condition. I said, yeah, the principal, I talked to her a week ago on this, and she said she'd sent a notice out, right there by my side. Did you need something from me? And I said, yeah, I thought you were going to send a notice out. I was like, oh, you misunderstood me. You know, I send it to the, to, you know, Central Office, and I'm like, well, Central Office across the street, this isn't a district problem, it's a Jennings problem, so I talked to you. And then she's telling me about how the school buses, they rerouted, and I'm like, but it's, it's not a problem with school buses, you know? I just want a safety notice to go out. So we didn't really have a really positive interaction. There was a lot of, yeah, but, yeah, but, yeah, but, yeah, but, not, oh, I'm sorry, let me get a notice out, which I think is pretty reasonable, right? The first thing you do is you tell people, don't do that. And, nothing. So I sent an email on Monday, you know, trying to restart things, and no answer. It got escalated to Kate McCoy, the Assistant Superintendent, who then responded to me with more of, you know, basically, thank you for your input, and that was about it. So then I sent a picture and CC'd the entire Board of Ed of what was going down there. We had an exchange for about seven emails, and it resulted in no response. Now, first of all, from a corporate perspective, you don't send someone up to your supervisor without introducing them, and that's just a perfect way to burn bridges. I'm talking to this person, I'm directing, I'm directly communicating with them by name, and they forward it to their boss who then answers me. You know, so that's what I'm talking about with culture. They don't seem to have the right objectives. What, what they're concerned about seems to be more about optics and, and protecting themselves and not about actually connecting with the parents and hearing about what they want. And I've talked to several others who've had similar experiences.
And, and one, one thing that is concerning is we do have a lot of families living in New London who, you know, English is not their home language. Many of the parents, I learned when I worked for Head Start in New London, had, themselves had very bad educational experiences, so they're wary of making waves or anything because of their own experiences. So I worry that those parents, I, I don't worry that you will get, you know, discouraged and just go off and say, oh, no one will listen to me. But I do worry a bit that there are parents who will just get discouraged and leave.
I have that same worry. My great-grandmother was an immigrant, and she was around till my twenties. You know, my, my wife's grandfather and stepfather are both immigrants. She's Cuban-American, she moved up from Miami about 20 years ago with me. You know, we, we speak English, we speak Spanish poorly, but we do. And, yeah, I mean, Jennings...
Does she speak Spanish poorly as well as you?
Um, her family would say that. She speaks, I think, a little better than I do, but she says it depends on our emotional states. When I'm more excited, my Spanish gets better. But I grew up speaking English and Italian, and I learned Spanish, you know, from my, my in-laws, my family. And, yeah, I mean, Jennings is, is the international magnet school, you know, it's, it's our, it's our premier ESL school. There's a large ESL and immigrant population there, you know? If anything, and alert's helpful, they may not be aware of the situation, you know? Another thing is, like, they never even sent a, there's, there hasn't been, if you look at all my sick pictures, you'll never see a single district employee at that corner. I mean, they've known about it for weeks, and they can't have somebody just there. I mean, this is something in wealthier districts that I've lived in, it just, it wouldn't happen like this. And, and, yeah, I mean, it's not going to discourage me, but look at, look at the efforts that I went through just to get a public safety alert out. You know, I went through the city's website, I went to the mayor, I've gone to the principal of the school, I've gone to the Assistant Superintendent, and now I've CC'd the entire board, you know? Now, what's that mean to my neighbors, right? What does that mean to my neighbors?
Yeah, well, I had, yeah, it, it's tough. And, and this is one example, but, you know, the other thing I had heard was that the communication of texting and emailing is just not the most efficient way to go about it, and it's too bad, resources are scarce. We actually do have to be efficient.
Right, yeah, we do. And, yeah, I mean, I was at Step Up New London at their family day, and a parent was expressing, and I hadn't even noticed, but it's like, the more I talk about this, the more stories I get. And, you know, in the past, we would get a text with a summary of the issue and a voicemail with a summary of issue, and if there was a more detailed version that was necessary, go out through email. Now, about half the time, we're getting texts and voicemails that say, check your email. And some people, you know, I mean, first of all, I don't know why we can't send out, you know, a preference, you know, survey. We do send out surveys. Why not send out a preference that just, you know, route that particular preference? But, but second of all, you know, it's like, just give a summary, don't, don't call someone to tell someone to answer their door, you know? It's just, it's ridiculous, and it's a waste of time. And, and, yeah, there's just other, it's just, there's other style and, and culture things going on. I mean, the beginning of the school year, Jess Reyes had a kindergartner, Nathan Hale, who she dropped off in the morning and needed to pick up early, and when she called the school to tell them that they were going to pick up early, they told her that her son wasn't at school. And this was by noon, all right? Attendance is taken, and they admit that they took attendance and he wasn't there, but she had to find out about it by calling the school. Now, she gets there in a panic because her five-year-old is missing and nobody knows where they are, and they won't let her in the building, all right? There's, they won't let her in the building, she ends up calling the police. Now, I know there's two sides to every story, but you got to be pushed pretty far to call the police, and I've talked to other parents who have called the police or thought about calling the police because they weren't getting, they weren't getting communication, you know? They weren't getting access, you know, from the public school. And that, I mean, I don't need police doing that. And there's no, there's no district mandate from the Board of Ed that says an authorized, identified parent can't get into a school. And what purpose does that serve? You've got a panicked parent out there who can't get into the building where she left her five-year-old, all right? I'm sorry, like, I mean, this doesn't cost any, this isn't a budget issue. This is, people aren't treating the parents with respect.
And I have long felt that one issue that, you know, schools should be really as welcoming as they can to community, you know, within the bounds of safety because that's how you get community support of the school as well.
Right.
But I wanted to shift a little and talk about the ESL programming because, as you know, years ago, you know, when we were both with Republic Ed, we showed that film, Speaking in Tongues.
Yes.
About how, really, how, you know, knowing more languages than just English is very enriching to kids. So, talk a little about the experience of, you know, English as a special...
And imagine what we could have done with some of those funds that went to, to NASS, you know? We could have hired a couple more bilingual teachers, perhaps. But, yeah, I, you know, I, I'm glad that we have a, a pretty robust ESL program, you know? And not, and not just for Latinx, which makes up like over a third of our city, by the way.
There are a ton of languages.
But there, yeah, I mean, there, there's a Haitian community here, you know, there's, there's several different Asian communities here. You know, ESL is really important, immigrants are really important, and, and we need to make sure that they succeed by making sure that they have an excellent education and they learn English, right?
Yeah.
And, you know, so I, I'd like to see that, that program expanded. The Magnet, you know, Jennings Magnet School, they used to have an immersion Spanish track there, which I was trying to get my daughter into, and that broke down through communication again. But, but we don't have that program anymore, and, and that, that's terrible to me. I would love to see New London become, you know, a bilingual city, you know, and to have that, that conduit for more, more people who grow up with English as their primary language or their secondary language.
Yeah, that's the other piece of it. It's partly that there are the students who come from a, you know, family with a different home language, and I know there are so many.
Right.
A few of the years I worked for Head Start, I had 11 students in like five or six different home languages.
Yeah, you had like Pashto and Urdu, too.
Yeah, we had, we had Gujarati, I had Urdu, I had, yeah, from the Philippines, Tagalog.
Wow, yeah.
We had, we had a family from Micronesia, I forget what they call, what they were speaking there. Their English was really excellent, I have to say. And we had, I had a Nigerian family for many years, so there are, even beyond English, Spanish, and Haitian Creole.
Yeah.
There are a lot of languages. But, you know, on the other side of it, you know, I sometimes, when I've gone abroad, have found that, you know, the people from the United States who only know English are kind of, I don't want to say like deficient, but that, it is kind of a deficiencies compared to most of the world.
It's a bad look.
Knowing more than, knowing more than one language is actually the, the norm among humanity worldwide.
It really, it really is. It really is, and, and it's, it's kind of embarrassing for one of the world's most powerful, you know, wealthiest nations that has all these resources and is literally the crossword of the worlds. We have every language, every religion, you know, spoken and practiced here. We have people from literally all over the world, just not a single country that could say that has the populations of the world community that we have here, and, and we do that. And we're, we're a service economy as well, you know? China is outpacing us in manufacturing, and, you know, but we, we're a service economy. We, we engineer, you know, we're lawyers, we're doctors, we tell people how to do the things that they do. And, you know, wouldn't that be easier to sell that service if you could speak the language of some of the other countries buying it? You know, who's going to get the contract? I mean, there's practical reasons for this, too, but we should be celebrating the fact that we're a multicultural country and a multicultural community. I mean, New London alone has caused us to celebrate that. You know, I mean, if you want to live out in Peoria and that doesn't matter to you, I mean, that's fine, but, but here, you know, we have a multicultural city, and we should acknowledge that in our budget, in our schools.
Yeah, and, you know, there have been several case studies... Yeah, and you know, there have been several case studies of old American factory towns that went through a decline when the factories closed. And some of them have been very revitalized by having a large influx of immigrants.
Oh, yeah.
Because immigrants, when we see it here too, are very likely to be small business owners. And they're not, they're often not very high-status businesses, but they really contribute to the economic life of their towns.
Yeah, I mean, you know, literally smarter, you know, women and men have written volumes and volumes of volumes about the contributions that immigrants, you know, have given.
Well, yeah, I don't think those phone calls are for us.
I don't think that's for us either.
The lights are blinking.
It was, yeah, it was surprising, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think if it's for us, we'd get a little flashing light up above the monitor. So I guess one thing I'd be interested in asking is like, how has your campaign experience been so far? Have there been any like really interesting things happening or revelations or?
I mean, I, I, this wasn't something that I ever had any, any aspirations to do. So it's, so it was completely new experience for me and I'm, you know, I'm a talker, obviously. And, you know, it's, it's a weird experience to be encouraged to talk all the time because that's never happened to me in 51 years that I can remember. It's usually the other way. But I am, I'm enjoying, you know, getting out there and, and meeting people, meeting other parents, meeting other community members and hearing them. You know, some people I agree with, some people I don't agree with, some people we're somewhere in the middle. But I think it's very encouraging and I think if you do, you know, politely, tactfully, you know, talk to your neighbors about what you see in the city and how the city does business and, and, and has governed itself, that you'll find that you're, you're really not by yourself. That, you know, most people I talk to, there's a lot of common ground about what we want in the schools. And what we don't have, I think, is enough representation. And, and that's not meant to disparage anybody who's sitting in government. I don't know why the things that I want to get done aren't getting done. And I don't know why they're not as responsive. But I do think that we want the same things and that, that the board needs more parents, they need more people on the board who want to listen directly to the people.
And I guess that leads to another question, and it's not merely a board issue, but I think it's a city issue and it's an issue in a lot of cities, not just New London, is how to get meaningful input from the people who live in town.
Right.
Because, you know, I just, I subscribe, well, I get postings on Facebook and email from Strong Towns, you know, a nonprofit. And today's article of the day or they, they're planning a webinar on, you know, most community engagement is worthless or worse than worthless.
Right.
So what can you do to get real public input that makes sense and really is meaningful?
Right.
So how would you, how should we be reaching out better?
There's more, there's more data than that too. I mean, they've, I think, I think MIT found, or yeah, I'm pretty sure it was MIT found that Congress responded one-third of the time to public opinion, that most policies get passed, it doesn't matter what majority opinion is. But yeah, you know, at the end of the day, you have to make your judgment, right? You have to determine which candidates you think are most interested in representing you, right? That you think, you know, they're approachable, they're reasonable, they share some of the things that you want, you know? And I don't think that really matters by party. I think if you took my name and, and my, my face off of any of my party literature or my platform, you handed it out to Republicans, Democrats.
Yeah, and you can like, you can show it, sort of, it sort of looks like that.
I mean, they're not, you know, they're not going to care. It says, I'm ensuring that all our, that our all magnet district effectively acquires and distributes funds and resources for all New London students. I mean, is there a Democrat or Republican that doesn't want that? Seeking out input from New London parents and students to ensure their voices are heard and represented? Maybe, maybe they want that, maybe they don't, I don't know. But that sounds like, you know, it's, it's a pretty easy ask, right? People can get behind that. Improving the timeliness and quality of communication between the NLPS administration and faculty and New London parents and students. We've gone over that pretty heavily.
Right, they probably would have, if we had done the literature today rather than two weeks ago, it might have all been in a different order.
Right, I want to build our already impressive ESL program to encourage the success of our ESL community members because that's what it's about. It's about the success of your neighbors, right? Because that's what builds a strong community. We're all successful, we all do well. And, you know, and I'm interested in expanding NLPS curriculums to, you know, include better education on civics and government that teaches our rights and responsibilities as well as how government works. I think we've seen a decline in that. And talking with some people, you know, it seems like there's a lot that they didn't learn that I did in public schools. So I'd like to review that. But, but yeah, I mean, you know, what's controversial about that, you know, on party lines? So, but as far as getting that share, you know, you have to look for the people who are interested in that, which is why I think you should vote green, because we don't take money from anybody but voters. That's how we support our campaigns. And, you know, if we don't have a voter base, if we don't have people to agree with us who want to fund our campaigns in an area, we don't run. Democrats, Republicans, they'll just reshuffle money around from Pfizer, EB, or the casinos and they run anyway, no matter who's supporting them in New London County. But we don't. So I think you can have a lot of confidence that we're interested in what you want done in government.
I was going to mention too, when you're talking about voting, a lot of people, if you look at how many of our New Londoners vote in the presidential election versus how many vote in a city council election year, when it isn't even a mayoral election. So, you know, this year, we're only going to be voting for city council and Board of Education. And probably the numbers of people who get to the polls is likely to be two-thirds of what you see in a presidential year.
Right.
And, you know, I, I think I'd like to make a pitch, I'm sure you'd like to make a pitch.
Absolutely.
That voting in the local elections is really more important because, you know, Keith is talking about being very responsive. And the fact is, all of the council members and all of the Board of Education members are the neighbors of everyone who lives in New London. You might see them in the grocery store, you might see them at a school function and you can approach them. Whether or not they want to be approachable might be a different matter.
Right.
But they are local, they are right here in, in our backyard.
Yeah.
And so in a way, I, I almost think the numbers should be reversed and, and we should get more participation in the local elections than, I mean, I'm not telling anyone not to vote in the nationals, but, but, but really the locals do impact our everyday life more.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, what, what happens at your school board, what happens to your state legislator, your city council, those are the things that affect your life literally every day. And, and we should be doing more of that. But people, I think people have been discouraged by the democratic process nationally and locally. In my lifetime, I've watched it decline. I've watched, you know, people coming out and decline. And I, you know, I want to remind people that that's how you get a leader like Trump, you know? When, when less than half of the people are coming out to vote, it only takes a minority, you know, to get what they need, you know? So it's dangerous. You know, you can get a very motivated minority of people when we're not, when we're not voting. But that being said, I understand, I understand why people aren't participating. They're discouraged, they feel disenfranchised, they don't feel listened to. It's difficult to vote, you know, which some states are trying to make easier. And even some of the ways that we vote may not be the best, best way, you know, to speak to our government about things. Some states have done ranked choice voting, I believe Maine and New Hampshire, and Maine and New Jersey maybe, but definitely Maine.
New York did some. I think, I think Maine did a better, has done a better job. They even did it up in the presidential.
But you're discouraged, you're discouraged from it. Government is Byzantine, you know, it's, it's, it's a burden. It's hard to get the information that you want. And we're busy, you know? And, and right now, I mean, we're in a crisis, we're still in a crisis. So for me, me personally, I want to fix that. I want to make a partnership, you know? It's like, if I get elected, I want to, part of my responsibility is not just to be, show up at meetings and make decisions and, and read reports, but it's also going to be to inform, you know, the electorate, the voters, the people who voted for me and the people who didn't vote for me. I'm not entirely sure how that's going to look. It'll probably be bi-weekly or monthly newsletter, maybe podcast, maybe both, you know? But I, I want you to know what's being done. And I want to hear from you, you know? So you're going to have access to me. Visit my website, you know, send me an email. But, you know, know that when, once I get elected, that's not the last you're going to hear from me until the next election. You know, I, I'm going to tell you, these are things that are going to affect our budget. These are things that are affecting equity in our neighborhoods. These are safety issues. These are, I'll give you my opinion and, you know, and I'll tell you, because once I get there, regardless of what I want or what you want me to do, I still got to convince six other people. And, and nothing works better than that than, than community support.
You know, when you say that, I, I remember, there is a candidate for Board of Ed who is running in Bridgeport. He's actually running on the Working Families line.
Yeah, I know.
And he, and he was doing like Zoom meetings over the past year explaining to the budget to people.
Yeah.
And I won't say they were well-attended. I went to one of them, but he kind of went through the budget, not line by line, but, but area by area and really explained it in layman's terms.
Yeah.
And I think his professional credentials are similar to yours.
Yeah, just socle.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I know, I know, I know. And that's a good idea. I'll have to talk to him more about that.
Yeah.
Because it's a good idea. But, you know, I mean, if I get elected, the website's going to stay up. My wife is a software engineer, she's doing it for me. It's an excellent website.
It's really fast.
It's very fast. She's very proud about that, by the way. You know, but that, that will, that will probably be, you know, a crossroads, a sign of shore, a repository for that information and you'll be able to go and see what's going on. I want to help organize you and inform you so that your time's not wasted. If I get a couple of hundred people across New London who can dedicate four or five hours a month just to staying on top of things, emailing their board, showing up at a strategic meeting for public comment, that could make all the difference, make a huge difference. You know, so far, we, we, on this whole budgeting thing for the emergency funds, there's been like 150 comments on it. And, and that's how they're spending $26 million. So, you know, imagine how much more powerful that could be, you know, on a regular basis.
Now, one thing I wanted to mention because this is a show about education and although it isn't airing until next week, we will get it on YouTube before that. And this Thursday, there is an open house at the high school from 5:00 to 7:00 PM so that people who are interested in seeing the new construction, which was anticipated for, I don't know, probably a decade before it actually was implemented and completed. So I, I saw an event for it and it seems to be mostly targeted towards families with students at the high school, but the public is welcome to attend.
It's open to the public.
And just, I'd like to get a tour of the new facilities.
I'm going to be there, yeah, Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00. I will definitely be there, probably in the middle there between 5:30 and 6:30. But yeah, I think you should definitely show up for that and, and see that. But yeah, I mean, I want, I want to encourage everybody, you know, to, to, to go to those, those open houses, those district events, go to our community meal at Jennings on Wednesdays.
Yeah, I think it's only once a month now.
It's once a month now, but, but it's, it's like, it's the best $5 meal you'll get. It's, it's the cost of a Big Mac and, and it's amazing.
Yeah, I do miss, you know, the weekly ones, but yeah, times have changed and I've noticed the more and more people get them takeout now, which is really unfortunate because you just catch up with people once a week, but maybe, maybe the time will come. Just in general too, I, I have the ballot here, sort of. So I'll, I'll hold it up. The actual ballot will be posted on the Secretary of State's website and many towns are, but as of this morning, New London wasn't. But we do have a list of all the candidates that are running.
Here I am.
Yeah.
And you can vote up and down or across. You know, if you want to vote for Nathan and you want to vote for me, that's fine.
Yeah, the, the columns are not head-to-head. The rules are people can vote for up to any seven you want. If you vote for eight, you'll have a spoiled ballot, don't do that. But you can vote for anything from, from one through seven or actually zero through seven, although I don't-
Anywhere in the ballot, seven for council, seven for Board of Education.
And choose your favorites because these committees, you know, and I guess I'll, I'll put on my minor party, you know, hat here. You know, when former late Governor Grasso got the Freedom of Information Act passed, it was done, I think it passed unanimously in record time. And the way that public disclosure passed so readily was that political parties' internal business was exempt. So anything that happens in a Democratic Party caucus, a Republican Party caucus, or a Green Party caucus, or a Libertarian caucus, there's no requirement for public disclosure or transparency. And that's okay. Where it doesn't become okay is if you have a supermajority of a single party on every government board. What's decided on that private caucus can become, you know, the, the, the result of a public meeting and the discussion already happened behind closed doors. And you, you might already have the votes, but you don't have to listen to the public or listen to any dissenting board members. So having a mix of parties is its own virtue regardless of who the candidates who are serving are.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so we, no, we definitely say, vote for the best, most competent candidates, but don't vote just because someone is on any line.
Right.
And don't vote for monopoly in any of these positions because you can't get transparent government if everyone's from the same party. Even if they have the best intentions, the rules make it so that it's just not going to be as transparent.
Yeah, it can't be. And Democrats have already told us that they can make their decisions in smoke-filled rooms.
So I think we have about five more minutes. Oh, we have seven minutes, a gift. So I do wanted to mention to people that, you know, we have an office, the New London Green Party.
312 State.
312 State Street. We haven't quite started to have regular office hours, but it's something that's in the works because it's a really fun space. It was formerly Hanifin's Bar, formerly Devzon State. And, you know, we, we probably won't have the number of in-person events that we've had in the past before social gatherings became more complicated and fraught with potential danger of, of exposure. But we do plan to have it open. We have literature about all the candidates, we have people you can talk to. And we will be having some events. So in addition to Keith's website, the, just the NLgreens.org website will probably list whatever is going to be happening. And if you go to the website now, but not on a Safari browser, I don't know, you can see some video from our office launch party from last week. It works on Chrome, it works on Firefox.
I haven't tried it, I haven't tried mine on Safari and I'm a little nervous.
It doesn't work on Safari.
But yeah, I mean, I have a news section which has the videos on it, so.
Yeah, I don't know what the problem is. And I guess, you know, as part of a call to action, you know, people can, you know, should register to vote and register to vote where they live now. You can check online at the Secretary of State's office and I believe we posted in a few different places where you can check if you're registered, where you can register- where you can check if you're registered, where you can register online.
Yep. And that's on my website too. And you'll see occasional posts on Facebook on, you know, how to, you know, how to register to vote easily.
And you mentioned, well, there are two other things we should mention. One, the difficulty in voting now as a result of COVID. There's basically no excuse absentee voting now. So, people can get in touch with the city clerk right now and get an application for an absentee ballot. And you just have to check that you want to vote absentee because of COVID.
Yeah, it's a super simple process now.
You don't need to just... And there is same-day voting. We have one more minute, I hear.
Yeah, we have a couple of minutes, but the calendar's going to be...
Yeah, so yes, we do have same-day voting if people go to City Hall. But it's really better to register ahead of time. So, your last one-minute remark.
One-minute remark is just, you know, like I said, Latinx makes up a huge part of our community. They're a community that I'm very interested in, you know, and I just wanted to speak to them directly with my bad Spanish. And, vecinos, lamentos hablar español como un niño pequeño. Pero quiero sus votos para la junta de educación en New London. Si habla español, si habla inglés, no importa. Visite mi sitio web y citanme en Facebook. Dime que quiere, dime que quiere en las escuelas públicas de New London. Y por favor dile sus vecinos que me citan. I guess that's it, other than, well, gracias, of course, gracias. Juntos podemos hacer más. Gracias.
And I have to say that the website is like really good in Spanish as well as English.
Bilingual, you just click a little button and you can see it in both languages, yeah.
So, thank you, Keith, for coming on and talking for an hour. And to everyone else, come visit the office, visit the websites, and become informed and involved.
Yeah.
So, we'll see you next week.